Then this meeting of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 4:06 PM Tuesday, February 6, 2018 in Room 137 of the Addison Building. Present at the board table is Mr. Michael Munoz, Superintendent of Schools and in ad voting, ex officio member of the board. Also present is Ms. Wendy Edgar, Assistant Board Clerk. Ms. Edgar, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Barlow. Mrs. Edgar.
Here.
Jim Marvin.
Here.
Mr. Schuster.
Here.
Ms. Simeon.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Ms. Workman.
Here.
Stand as we are able for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, our nation, our government, and to the Constitution of Justice. Thank you. Before we begin, let me remind the board and those of you present that we are mandated to finish this meeting by 6 o'clock tonight. So we want to have robust discussions on those things that we need to discuss, but we have a hard mandated stop time at 6 o'clock. Item 2.01, approval of agenda. This is an action item. Mr. Munoz.
There's one change. Item 7.04, resolution disciplining an employee, has been added.
Seconded. And seconded, we approve the agenda and the discussion. Single discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 3.01, school board committee assignments update. Are there any of those of you on committees who would like to make a report to the board and to those present? Okay. 4.0, consent agenda. This is an action item. Are there any items that individuals would like to pull up for separate consideration? It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. High student achievement, 5.01, communications audit. This is an information item. I'm missing something.
At this time, I would like to recognize the staff that are in the consent for retiring. Danny Hamstrom, clerical at Northbrook, has 27 years in the district. Carol Lucido, CNI, 27 years. Moose Gordy, teacher at Northbrook, 19 years. Cindy Heimie, teacher at Century High School, 21 years. Scott Maylie, counselor at ALC, 32 years. James Miller, teacher at Maile High School, 34 years. And Peggy Altu Martin, manager for the Childhood and Family Services, 35 years. So I'd like to thank all of those individuals for their service to the district and service to our students. So just wanted to recognize them tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Munoz. That's so important. And all of our staff members, and especially those who have put in the number of years that these people have, just helped to make this a better school district. So again, thank you. Now, 5.01, communications audit. Ms. Munoz.
Yes, I just want to remind the board that back in September, we partnered with an organization to do a communication audit. And I think they ran 20 or 22 different focus groups representing all the different employee groups and community members. So tonight, they're here to share the results of those, of that audit. And I think you're going to find that there are some things that we are doing really well, and there are some areas where we can get better. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Heather, and she'll introduce our two presenters.
Tonight, I'm going to introduce to you Bob Knight and Susan Brod, who both have been our auditors over the past several months. And before they dive into the results, I also wanted to take a moment to recognize the communications team, Nicole Osterhout and Cassie Galing, who are sitting behind me, and thank them for all of the work that they do for this district from sunup to sundown with websites and with communicating with the public and with our internal audience. So thank you. All right. Take your leave.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Superintendent Munoz and board members. We're happy to be here to present the findings of our audit that we conducted. As they said, we started that last fall. The focus groups are in September, but it's kind of been an ongoing process to review additional data and information. So we'll kind of walk through the process and the goals a little bit with you. And there's no signal there, so that's... There we go. Okay. So just to... And we do want to also thank Superintendent Munoz and Miss Messler and the other two, Nicole and Cassie, as well, as they were very helpful in organizing all of this, because it's a lot to get organized in a very short period of time. So my name is Susan Brod, and I'm a communications professional, and I also do this communications audit with Enzira, and we're happy to talk about the audit. So as you can see, the goals of the audit were pretty straightforward. We look to gather all kinds of data that we can, whether it's opinion and perceptions or facts. And Munoz, looking at it and saying, what's the effectiveness of the current communications program? How is it being managed? And then what can we do to suggest some possible improvements? As we know, we can always look at continuous improvement opportunities. We looked at all of those items and then provide some strategies based on best practice of what we know in terms of the field of school public relations, also in terms of what we know from being in other school districts and doing audits in other school districts, and then really about how you build those relationships with all of your stakeholders within the Rochester Public Schools community. Getting it wrong. So the process really involved a variety of ways of looking at current communication vehicles and tactics and the different content. We did reviews of the website. We looked at the other communication vehicles that the district currently is using. We did facilitate 21 focus groups between my co-part, Bob, and I. We did that together. And then we also used the information, the same questions that we asked in the focus group, we're also asked of some of your communities, of maybe whether first language is not English. And so we were able to utilize the services of your bilingual staff as well to help us make sure that we're hearing all voices in this audit. And so that was a wonderful piece of data that we used. And then we conducted some additional surveys of the administration and principals. We looked at kind of how the information flow works in the district in terms of pushing out and also bringing it back in. How are we doing that? And maybe where some of those gaps might be. We then, as we often talk about in our world, we follow the RACE process. So there's the research that we do, and so that's all the research, and we analyze all that data. And then we put together some findings of what we think could possibly help you move and continue that improvement.
So the report is really divided in a couple of sections. The first kind of key sections is what we call key findings and observations. And I'm going to give you just a kind of an overview of the key findings piece before we get into the other, other key portion of the report. And the key findings are things that we heard multiple times in both focus groups and the observations. They include both things that are working well as well as things that people might point out that aren't working well. The first thing that people pointed out is the variety of tools that the district is using and using them well and using them effectively. It also talked about the materials, the reports, or the summaries from the board and cabinet meetings that are sent out to staff are something that are highly appreciated by a lot of staff members. And while there are some points for improvement, the district was really recognized as having a very effective system for communicating with non-English speaking families. Working in a school district, I'm really jealous of what you have here. It's really, again, I think we can always, I think we can always do better. I think everyone can do better, but you folks really have a sound system and are really doing a nice job in that area. In terms of perception, there's a perception here of the closer you are to the system, the more positive the perception. So if you're a parent, if you're engaged in the system, you're going to see, you're going to feel more, feel better about the schools and have a more positive perception. The further away you are, it gets less positive. That's really common. It's something that we see a lot, but it's also something that we saw here as well. In terms of the communication at the school level, inconsistent, some schools are doing a great job, some schools maybe not do as well, and we have some recommendations for that. But there, again, there's some things that are working well. Websites, again, are a great source of information, but there are some, in some cases, the information isn't always updated or as easy to find. In terms of how teachers are communicating with families, we're seeing, and again, this is something that we're seeing in lots of districts, teachers are using a variety of apps and systems to communicate with families, which is a great thing. The struggle that we heard from families is it's kind of driving them crazy, because it depends on where you are with, if you have kids in multiple schools, you could have teachers using a variety of systems. And that, while they appreciate the information, navigating the systems can be a challenge. We found a need to, for the district to more effectively market or communicate what's going on and really just telling a story, doing a better job with that. Fortunately or unfortunately, Rochester is like everybody else, and word of mouth is a really popular way to communicate. Lots of information gets shared between folks in the community at soccer games and that sort of thing. And they talk about, they're talking about what's happening in the schools. There's a need for more video. Again, this is kind of a best practice nationwide thing that we're finding on. People are consuming information differently, especially folks of younger generations, and they love videos. The more information that can be shared in that way is effective. In terms of your kind of ongoing OCR complaint, there was lots of conversation about that in the focus groups. And, you know, folks just kind of felt like it's still there and still needs some attention that needs to be communicated about. In terms of the kind of a broader, a broader issue, the Destination Medical Center, there was a sense in the focus groups that there was, there wasn't enough understanding in the community about how that, how that initiative is going to affect the schools and some of the, some of the impacts that are going to come in terms of enrollment and facilities. And then finally, the local media, there, lots of people, especially the older generations, are getting their information about schools through the local media. And sometimes they find that valuable, sometimes they don't. Again, it told us that the district has an opportunity to do a better job of telling its own story. So I want to move into the recommendations, and we're going to go through these fairly quickly, but I do want to say is, and we had a conversation before this, and I told the superintendent this, is a lot of these recommendations, while they're a bit different, you're struggling with many of the same communication issues that many districts are struggling with. We do probably, Susan and I personally come to them, but our organization does probably be 10 to 15 of these audits every year across the country, and there's at least five or six of these, five or six of these recommendations that end up in most of those reports. Again, the details might be different, but a lot of us are struggling with the same thing in terms of internal communication engagement. So I want, I just want you to know that you're really average in that way, that you're struggling with some of the same things that I'm struggling with in my community, and Susan is as well. So the first recommendation is to really take a look at a kind of an overall strategic plan for communication that is aligned to the other, other strategic initiatives that you have going on, your strategic plan. Again, this is really best practice. The thing that we know is when communication is aligned with everything else, it ends up being really effective and it ends up being, it ends up supporting the other things that are happening in the school district. Recommendation two, again, there's a lot of work in Heather's team to develop some communication plans. We support that and even want to deepen that, to make sure all of the departments are working closely together to make sure information gets to folks and make sure that we have some planning around how to effectively do that as we move forward. The third recommendation is about key communicators networks. Again, that's a true strategy that has really kind of a best practice around it and engages people both internally and externally. It's kind of third-party spokespeople for the school district. It's an opportunity for the district to engage a group of people and then have them help you in communicating and supporting the school district. In terms of the fourth one, this is really about engagement of staff people. There's another one about staff communication, but again, the whole notion of engaging staff members in, in what's happening in the school district. And a lot of the detailed steps here are really about trying to find different ways to engage staff, because each, each group of staff members is going to be connected and engaged in a different way. So what we found is rather than having one or two things, we recommend several things so you end up engaging a greater number of people in the end. Recommendation five, come on, there we go. It is about the engagement of community. And again, that's, that's in a similar vein, we're really looking for a variety of opportunities to engage people and especially engage those who may not either have been engaged in the past or maybe have been disengaged. So we want to try to do some of those tools and steps to make sure that we bring in lots of voices in the conversation. Recommendation six, again, is the staff communication piece. Again, this is a very popular recommendation. Some of the things that you have, they're currently that are working well are the board and cabinet updates, but we also suggest some different things, some newsletters, and some additional opportunities to really make sure staff have information about what's happening in the districts. Communication with parents is recommendation seven. The one thing I'll point out here, again, back to the video piece, is what we're finding, and there's a video thread, I think, in some of these recommendations. And again, that has become a best practice in school communications. Probably 10 years ago, I've been doing this for a while, 10 years ago, video was seen kind of as a, as a special opportunity, a thing that you did only once in a while. You know, boy, if you did a video, that was a really big thing. And now video has become a daily, if not, you know, at least several times a week. That's how we're telling stories. And again, that's an opportunity for you. It's a different way of communicating, but it's a way that your community is, I think, resonating toward. Especially what we're seeing is younger generations. They're looking at more, they're digesting content differently, and they're taking it in differently than some of the older folks in your community do. And again, video is a way to, it's a way to really hook those folks in. Recommendation eight is connecting with families without kids in school. You have a very engaged and robust community here. There's lots of people in your community that don't have kids in your system, but you still want to be engaged. One of the things that we're seeing, again, this is something that is typical, is one of the places that you're, that these folks are looking toward for information is through the media. There are the folks who are still reading the newspaper. A lot of younger folks aren't reading newspapers anymore, but some of the older residents still are. So there's an opportunity to tell your story differently in that way. Recommendation nine is all about marketing, is really focusing those messages to support. And it's just not about recruitment, but it's really about supporting the school district's brand identity and reputation and to make sure people really understand your story here. Number 10 is about website. This is something that when we walked in the door in, in September, Heather said one of the things we're already working on is our website, and I'm going, great, because everybody needs to improve it, and they're already doing some things. They have some plans in place. We have some suggestions that we've provided. But again, it's really about providing that access and providing information that's easily accessible to community. Finally, a recommendation is to really think about the investment. As we go into school districts and we review things, we really ask districts to think about how much they're investing. Sometimes there's an opportunity to increase that investment, sometimes there isn't, but we really, in this case, encourage you to take a look at that. And if there's something you can do, it would certainly help in the results that you're getting.
Which leads well into just kind of closing comments about some additional considerations that we wanted to highlight. I think it's really important to note that this, through our audit, we have been able to articulate that you're doing a lot of things really well in this district when it comes to communications. And so there's a lot of opportunities to build on what's already there. Sometimes we go in and it's just kind of a clean slate, and you're saying, okay, we're starting from square one. So I really think there's an opportunity to build on some of the positive attributes that we're already doing. And I think that this audit and the full report, which I understand will be available for the public after this meeting, is really more of a roadmap on how to get there. And it's not that you're going to tackle 11 recommendations in the next three months. I mean, there's a lot to kind of digest and how to do that well. And so I think what we would suggest is to say, look at it as a roadmap, help prioritize which one of those recommendations align with your strategic goals and initiatives, and then put a plan together for that over the next several years. And I think finally, too, that end of talking about consideration or the recommendation number 11, when you talk about investment, is that this is not just the role of the communications department. Communications is really the role of everyone in the district. And so the more you can build up those systems and tools and avenues that help people get the information they need and they can be the ambassadors for the district, and then also finding those ways to get those, use those people to bring that information back in so that you, as leaders in this district, have the information you need to make the decisions, support your children.
So with that, we'll be quiet. And if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them. If you don't, we'll go.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. You got a lot of information across in a very concise way, and clearly, this is just the beginning of our plan to use that information as we continue to grow and build and improve what we're doing. I don't know how I feel about you labeling us as being average in our challenges, but I guess we'll take that. Board members, do you have questions or comments? Ms. Workman.
I have a question about, that's on Slide 8 under key findings, when you said that we need to understand and help to communicate the impact that the DMC will have on Rochester Public Schools. Is that something, and perhaps Heather or the superintendent would maybe be able to answer this more directly, is that, how much control does the Rochester Public Schools have over that? And are you looking at some kind of a shared responsibility with Maile Clinic on doing this, or?
I can speak a little bit of what we heard was just sort of a recognition that there is going to be an impact. I think we heard both. I think we heard some of, how much is the Rochester Public Schools involved in this because it is really a community-wide initiative? But we also heard a lot of, so what are we doing to plan for it? What are we doing in terms of this will likely bring in more students? What are we going to do if our buildings are already full? How are we going to deal with that? So really trying to think ahead and not be just reacting to it and trying to be more proactive and strategic with it.
And there may be something embedded in that, that the folks in the community that are driving this initiative may not necessarily be thinking about the impact of the school district, or if they're thinking about it, it's not through the community that they're thinking about it. So it probably is kind of a joint conversation, but it's also, I think, an opportunity for the school district to say, this is a big deal, and here's, here's how we're going to be impacted, and here's how it's going to affect us.
Yeah, I think, I think that's kind of a, just a common concern by many in our community, just how DMC is going to impact not just the district, but our community as a whole. And I am fortunate to be considered a leader in the community, and we do have the opportunity to get updates. About every six weeks, we have a meeting, and they, they don't give us a lot of information, but they do update us on what's going on. Really, the impact that we're going to see is our enrollment. And, you know, we just recently had a study session, talked about our enrollment projections, and even before, DMC has a really good impact on our community, we're, we continue to see growth. Right? As I said that night, I think our growth's going to probably pick up even a little more once we start, the community starts feeling the impact of DMC. But, you know, I, hopefully, with our conversations we're having about our facility needs and that task force and the need for boundary adjustments, to buy us a little time until we build a couple new schools, we'll demonstrate that we are aware of what's going on and how this can impact our enrollment and what we're planning to do to address that.
I think what we heard was, just to be, you know, in communicating that out, I think your stakeholders would welcome to know that that's out there as well, so.
I think that's actually a really interesting topic, because having been a member of the Facilities Task Force for some time, I actually think we have been communicating that. But I think where the message may have been lost is how it's been communicated, because we're talking about Facility Task Forces versus here's the DMC impact to Rochester Public Schools. So it's more branding of the message versus content of the message that I think perhaps you have an opportunity to do better here, because we have certainly been talking about it for some time now.
Absolutely.
It's been interesting reading social media comments of this being a surprise, but yet I know we've been communicating it. So I think it is how we're saying what we're saying, because we've certainly been saying it.
Absolutely. And I, I think that both Bob and I can speak from our experiences, that, you know, people listen to it when they're ready to hear about it. So when it starts to impact them, that's when people are going to start getting engaged. And so you just have to keep talking about how we have been talking about it and remind them that you've talked about it and that behind them again. Mr. Brod.
Thank you. I have two questions. I'll begin with a statement based on Director Schuster's comment, and that is, if we've been talking about it, perhaps all the more reason why this, there's great value in this communications audit, because if the message isn't really being received or heard yet, then perhaps we need to maybe go about talking about it differently. And to that end, it brings me to my first question, and that is, in terms of communications audit, and this being a audit of the Rochester Public Schools, I was curious to note that there was not a student voice that was a part of this, and I was just curious as to why that was or is the case. Is that unusual, or could you speak to that?
In most of the, in most of the audits that we do, we don't include a student focus group. Sometimes we do. We did do one in Wisconsin District last year that Susan did. What we find is this, while the students provide some really interesting and sometimes provocative input, it doesn't necessarily help the district's communication. It's often focused at the school level. They're really good conversations to have, and they really are helpful for a high school principal or a high school principal's leadership team to really understand bringing in that student voice. What we found as a whole is that it's impact in a, at the district level isn't as significant. And also, when we sit down with planners like Heather and Mike and the team to figure out what groups are we going to invite, we have an initial list that ends up being a lot bigger, a lot bigger than the slots we have. So that's where some of the decisions get made. And I don't remember specifically here how we landed in students. I just don't remember the conversation. But as a rule, that kind of generally is our approach. If some districts absolutely want to do students, we do them, and we provide that information. But again, that's kind of a little background of kind of our approach to it.
I would just add to that. I think it's sort of in some of the recommendations implied in the detailed report is to say, how will you engage that next level of stakeholders with our students? Because that is your primary customer, right? So how are you engaging them? But you kind of have to think about it in terms of, they're not always able to answer the kinds of...
the kinds of system questions that we're asking of the adult participants. And so, but that's not to say I'm a big proponent of bringing the student voice in. We just have to make sure that they're able to answer the questions in impactful ways that lets them do that. But I would certainly encourage, and as I understand it, there are some communication or advisory groups or something that are currently in place to gather some of that student voice. But this was really more about system-wide kinds of communications.
We do have a student school board and that certainly is one of the ways we hear back from the students and we can certainly build upon that. Second question then deals with increased video usage. We have a couple of issues before us, boundaries, bonds. So how do you envision increased video usage being put into play to more effectively communicate the message beyond just print media and more newsletters or other social media means of informing the public or impacted parents?
I think from my perspective, videos are a way to tell the story in different ways. So we like to look at it as digital storytelling. And I think what it can help you do is that as schools change how we do school and how we learn, how we're, you know, personalizing learning for students and how we might be teaching differently, it helps the public see how that's working in a way that's, oh, okay, to see the student engagement. And, you know, the days of one teacher standing in front of 30 kids and everybody facing forward and being quiet is not really how we do school now. So it's a way to kind of visually show it and storytell it and even bring in that student voice that you mentioned before. And I think what we talk about with video is that they don't have to be the big professionally-produced ones. Sometimes you can get short little things from, you know, a phone that, you know, as long as you're following all the right data privacy things, that you can use on social media. And we know that on social media, videos and photos will get more clicks and more tags in. So it's all about driving people to whatever the information that you want. And so that's how we, I think, a lot of the video that we're talking about was not so much like you need one big marketing video that you can spend thousands and thousands of dollars on. I think it's more about those short little hits. And since those tools aren't everybody's pocket now, there's ways to use that to your advantage.
And there's a, what we're finding in a number of districts is people are accessing your website, for example, not by going to the website, but they come into the website through social media. So they'll come through Facebook, they'll come through Twitter. That's their, that's their entry point. One of the things that, in my school district, that we're working on right now, and I find this data fascinating, but there's a national data that shows 80% of the folks who view a video on Facebook don't turn the volume on. So they're just watching it. And if you think about how you do it, it's probably pretty close to that. So what folks are thinking about is how do I design video now that shows up on social media that doesn't require volume? So you're seeing, if you go home tonight and pull up Facebook and just, you know, watch some videos, and some of the most effective are using graphics and they're shorter and they're, and they're really focusing on how people are digesting content. People aren't, you know, there's the old rule of it's a 30-second bite, a three-minute bite, or a 30-minute bite. Nobody's digesting 30 minutes of content anymore. If they are, there's a few people, but not very many. It's really that 30-second, if you can hook them, then maybe you get them for three minutes, but you're not going to get them for much longer. So, and video is just, has become so compelling for people and it's so visual and you can do it in a way that is, you know, if you had a video with, you know, the superintendent or the principal standing in front of a sign talking for two minutes, yeah, that's probably not the kind of compelling content. But kids and messages and, you know, things, again, we're just, we're in some ways responding to research, but also responding to what your community is telling us. And that's kind of some of the best practices that we're seeing in other places.
Well, I did watch a video, a little girl eating an onion today that she swore was an apple without sound. I could tell what was going on. So I appreciate that. But my question is on, slightly on that on recommendation seven, because you're talking about increased use of video, but then you're also talking about considering non-tech methods of communicating with families. Can you elaborate on that a little bit, what those, that might mean?
I think it's a lot about knowing your audience. And so there's a lot of, you know, viral videos are great for certain populations and other populations want that face-to-face kind of conversations. And so we're, it's, I think what we've learned in, you know, we've both been doing communications for a long time, is that it's not, should it be this or this? It's more of everything. So it's really how, thinking about how the end user wants to get that information. And so you have a very large population that still wants in-person meetings and they still want newsletters mailed to their home and they still want to read it in the newspaper. So you can't not do that part. And so we're just trying to make sure that there's balance and, but make it targeted. Because not everything is going to hit everybody.
One of the things we find, especially with staff, is kind of the non-tech issue is, and this was true here and in other places, is you have staff members that either don't have time during their day to access email or don't have access to it. If I'm driving a bus, I don't necessarily have opportunity to do that.
Or do we want them to?
No, yeah, you probably don't want them to. But how might we, how might we think about that and make sure that they get the information that Heather might send in an email? How might we provide that in a non-tech way so they can consume it as well? We've become such a tech world that we assume that everybody, everybody does it and most people do, but some people can't or don't want to. Paper has, paper has declined, but it's not dead. And there's still a lot of people who just, let me, just give me a piece of paper and let me read it. And again, that hasn't, the challenge for us is nothing has gone away. We just keep getting more, more ways to communicate, which has become an ongoing challenge for all of us.
One more, one more question. Just this one. And we're, I know we're pressed for time tonight, but I'm wondering if in the more detailed version of this, if you address what you mean by communication protocols to guide decision-making?
Yes.
Is that in there?
Yeah, it's, it's detail laid out and there's a description of it.
Okay, so you don't need to tell me all that right now. I'll read it later on.
Awesome.
You've given us a lot of information, a lot to think about, and we have a lot of work to do. Thank you so much for your work.
Thank you.
Five point oh two, discipline data update. This is an information item.
All right, as all of our presenters work their way up to the table, I'll just kind of talk a little bit about what we plan to do tonight. Tonight, we're going to, we asked our legal counsel to give you an update on where we are with OCR. Carl is going to present the first semester district discipline, first at the district level and then how it looks by building. And then from there, we've invited a few principals to come and share some of the things that they're doing that we believe are having some results with you so you get more than just the data, but see some of the results of the professional development that we've been doing and some other things that have been working well at their sites. So I think we're going to start with Mika, first on the agenda.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm just going to briefly walk back through a little bit of history here. As many of you know, in 2009, we had the process begin with the Office for Civil Rights, or OCR. We then had two compliance reviews that began in 2010. OCR then conducted an investigation involving the district for a period of almost six full years. It was over five years. And at the end of that investigation, did not reach any adverse findings against the district. In fact, specifically found the absence of any kind of intentional discrimination or wrongdoing on the part of district staff. Nonetheless, OCR and the district administration agreed that there were disparities in the discipline rates of students of color and Caucasian students. And so the district really wanted to put its money where its mouth was. And we voluntarily, as it says in the document, entered into a resolution agreement with OCR to really commit ourselves to doing certain things, taking specific steps to ensure that we were doing everything we could to eliminate those disparities. I'm going to review tonight the steps that we have taken and the few that we have outstanding under that agreement. We have complied with the vast majority agreement at this point in time. And it's not that we haven't done anything. The agreement was set up in stages, so we had to do certain things by certain deadlines and then report on those things to OCR by deadlines. And so just walking through quickly, first, we're required to designate an employee to serve as the discipline supervisor and to consult with an expert or organization with expertise in nondiscriminatory practices and then provide strategies to the district that the district would then follow. We have done that. We're also required to consider whether additional schools needed additional steps. We've done that as well. We've complied with the reporting requirements and OCR has said we've met all of our obligations there. The second part of the agreement dealt with identifying early on students who were at risk, potentially at risk of disciplinary measures. And that, as part of that, we're required to have teaching and learning staff employ measures that were corrective other than discipline. And so we put a range of steps in place. We've complied with that. We're also required to provide written confirmation that we are continuing to use our PBIS framework. OCR has been very complimentary of the framework that we use for dealing with disciplinary matters in this district. So that's been fully complied with. We're also required to outreach to students and staff and community members in a variety of ways. I heard mentioned earlier from Director Barlow about our student school board. OCR liked that process, required us to continue doing it, asked us to continue doing this part of the agreement we have. And specifically in that process, we want to engage our students in providing input to us and things that they thought were positive and things they thought were negative and were likely to lead to discipline. And also to express openly to us any concerns they had in terms of racial issues or disparities that they observed and how we might go about addressing that. But in a very positive process, we've met those reporting requirements. Again, we've received a lot of positive feedback from the U.S. Federal Department of Education on that. We're also required to make some recommendations on equivalent implementation of discipline policies, practices, and procedures. We've met that requirement. We're required to, perhaps our most significant requirement was to develop a new handbook. And there were a lot of items attached to that. As part of what OCR is looking at is to make sure that we eliminate to the greatest extent possible any subjective classifications, disorderly conduct, disruptive behavior, so that, you know, that can lead to one person interpreting it one way and another person interpreting it another way. And then we have differences in how our discipline rates show up. So we took great measures and over the course of multiple years, really worked through that with OCR. OCR has said to us openly that they don't have, they never had a model that they really could hand out as a model and say, this is something great. We now, I believe, have achieved that status, that we just a couple of weeks ago had our last conversation with OCR on our handbook, have the complete blessing going forward. The only change they had asked us to make to what we proposed to them was to add a couple of sentences specifically outlining a limited role of the school resource officer when it comes to discipline. Obviously, they serve a very important role and function in our schools, but not when it comes to making disciplinary determinations. So we've done that. That has now been complied with as well. I'm just going to touch on the other major ones that we had here going forward. We had some student-focused remedies. We're required to make sure we had some in-school mentoring, peer mentoring, access to guidance counselors and so forth. We fully complied with that requirement. We're required to provide training to all teachers and administrators charged with supervising students in terms of our discipline policies and the changes that were being implemented. And I think you're going to hear some great information about the number of referrals overall, how they've decreased, meaning we're handling so much more in the classroom level now, rather than having kids go out of the classroom, which is obviously a very positive thing for the district and for its students. In addition, we provided training directly to our students on the handbook. Part of it is making sure they really understand what's expected and required of them. And we fully met that requirement. And I keep calling these requirements, by the way, but I want to make sure it's clear. We collaboratively developed these with OCR. We sat down a full day basically in a room, a couple of members of the cabinet and I, and with OCR representatives and walked through what makes sense, what do we think is actually likely to make a difference? And this is what we came up with. We had a number of requirements for limiting the role of the school resource officers I alluded to earlier. We had to provide training to the officers, training to the staff. We've met all of those requirements as well. The other kind of big lifting item, if you will, in the agreement is that we're required to collect data in 15 specific areas in terms of how we're doing. And I believe that the system, most sensitive collection of data, and by sensitive I mean most robust, tells us more than any other school has that I know of, any other school district. And we represent nearly half the districts in the state. This is a significant data collection process. And I think that, and you'll hear about that later from the folks who are really doing that, are, we've complied with all the data collection, except that we have one last report which is due on August 15 of 2018. And after August 15, 2018, by the way, the entire agreement has been fully complied with. So we are nearing that point in time. We're also required to annually implement, implement how we're actually, excuse me, annually evaluate how we're actually implementing our discipline policies and then make some reports on that. We have done that twice, got some good feedback from OCR, one last report due on August 15 of 2018. We're also required to establish some uniform standards for what the discipline files of students are going to look like and what our referral forms are going to look like. Because how we mark things on the form matters, all right? We want to make sure that we have a form that, again, doesn't lead to those subjective determinations. So we have fully complied with that as well. Then we just had a few more things. We're required to examine all the disciplinary referrals and then make a report. Our last one is due August 15. We've already made two of those, had positive feedback on those. The principals are required to annually meet with the teachers about the data that are collected. And we've done that twice. That's been positive. We have one last report on that due for August 15. Last two things we had is we, at the conclusion of each school year, were required to review disciplinary interventions, meaning not necessarily discipline outside of the classroom, but all the interventions that we have done with students. And then we make our last report on that on October, excuse me, August 15. And then finally, we were just charged with ourselves, looking at what we've done and then saying, are we going to make any changes going forward? And we write to OCR about that on August 15 as well. So that's what we have done. Again, we've fully satisfied the vast majority. We've fully complied with everything we're required to comply with. And I want to really emphasize that OCR has been extremely complimentary of the administration and the work that they have done and also of council. We've managed to maintain a very collaborative working relationship with OCR. And I think if you read the literature and you talk with folks around, you'll see that's often not the case. We took a different approach here. We did not take a combative approach. I also want to raise one other issue for you, just so that it's on your horizon as things develop here. Last week, it was widely publicized that the Minnesota Department of Human Rights, or MDHR, is in the preliminary stages of examining discipline rates of Caucasian students as compared to students of color in 43 school districts in Minnesota. The MDHR's analysis is based on their review of what's known as DURS data. In other words, Discipline Incident Reporting System data. This is not nearly so sensitive and robust of a measure as what the district is collecting. It's just general, how many kids were suspended, how many were expelled, et cetera. And so it's just been a kind of a broad look at that. As of this point in time, no charges of discrimination have been filed. And in fact, no formal investigation has been opened by MDHR. But obviously, there's an examination going on. Unlike some districts that might get caught in the very broad net that has been cast by the Department of Human Rights, Rochester has already taken extensive measures to address the issue of disproportionality, as I've already discussed. And again, we have already a determination by the federal government that after five-plus years of investigation, we have no wrongdoing whatsoever that was able to be determined. We have disproportionality, however, and that is an issue that we want to continue to address. There may come a time when the Department of Human Rights decides to take further action against districts in Minnesota, and that's certainly outside of our purview and control. But any decision by the department to investigate Rochester would certainly, in my opinion, result in unwarranted and inefficient use of resources, given all that Rochester has already done. already done and the investigation it's already gone through. An investigation by the department would also ignore the excellent work of the district and the work of OCR. And I think bluntly, it would imply that the Department of Human Rights thinks it has greater knowledge and expertise and resources than the federal government, including the U.S. Department of Education and Office for Civil Rights, which are specifically created and tasked with analyzing or analyzing these types of data, as opposed to the Department of Human Rights, which clearly is not. With all that said, again, given the size of the Rochester Public School District, we should expect inquiries potentially from the Department of Human Rights as we move forward in this process. And I just want to be clear that that's something that could be coming down the road for this district as well as 42 other districts in the state of Minnesota. So, with that, I take any questions? Otherwise, I turn it over to other folks who are next in the presentation order.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you. I'm going to stick around out of interest, but not charge you guys.
We like that.
I guess it's still afternoon, so good afternoon, board members. I'm here to provide you with a discipline update. And I'm just going to stand here because I don't have very many slides. I don't think the clicker will work very well on this. Just a reminder that the data I'm going to present is first semester 1617 and first semester 1718. So, it's not a full year. We wanted to capture this first semester and then compare it to last year first semester so we could provide that update shortly after the semester ended. This is a snapshot in time. I want to remind you of that, that I monitor this. I give a report every Friday. I look at it pretty frequently and numbers change from week to week. But this is where we were as of the end of first semester. I just want to remind you that this is Level 2 referrals. So, these are referrals that are higher-level behaviors that are going to result in assistance from an administrator. So, running in the hall or blurring out in class would not be included in these. So, if you look at the table I have up there, I have our raw numbers for referrals from first semester 1617, first semester 1718. And then, below that on, I'll try to put this right there, on these lines, I have what percentage of those, the breakdown of the referral percentages by race. And then, the line below that is the percentage of enrollment for each race in those two different school years. The fourth line in each table is something we put in just to, gives us an idea, a second measure of our proportionality, which is referrals divided by enrollment. So, if I had to summarize this first table, knowing that we're kind of under a time constraint here, I guess the first thing that I, when I was jotting down my notes is Rochester's becoming a much more diverse school every year. Just some examples, if you look at our Native American enrollment between 2010 and 2017, it's increased from 0.37 to 0.8. That's a 116% increase. I won't talk about all these groups. Students who are identified as Hispanic have gone from 7.66 to 9.69% of our population. That's a 26.5% increase. Students who are identified as Black have increased from 12.6 to 16.24%. That's a 28.9% increase. And students who are identified as white have reduced from 69.09 to 61.55. That's a 10.9% reduction. The next thing I would take from this table is that our Level 2 referrals are substantially down. There's been a substantial reduction in those referrals. And if you look at this little red line, I guess it's kind of red on there, orange. If you take the number of referrals from the first semester 1617 and compare those to the numbers from the first semester of 1718, you'll see the reduction in referrals there. Most notable, last year at this point, we had 106 referrals for students who are Native American. We're down to 11 at the end of first semester. The other thing is, we look at that referrals divided by enrollment, we're becoming more proportionate to our enrollment with the exception, the only exception in this table is for students who are Asian. They've actually, while their enrollment has increased, their percentage of referrals have decreased slightly. If we go down to suspensions, and these are out-of-school suspensions, so this does not include students sitting in the offices, the students sent home for part or all of the day. We capture all suspensions. Like Mick mentioned, DURS data only grabs students that are out of the full day or more. We collect all the students, whether it's a half-day, partial day, full day. And when you look at that, again, we are, we see a reduction in the number of suspensions across all races. And you can see that, again, the percentage of reductions in suspensions. And in the OSS, the out-of-school suspension rates tend to be very similar to our overall referral rates if you look at those. Any questions about that slide?
First of all, that's excellent data. I just wanted to be clear in my own mind, for 1617, were those numbers Level 2?
Yes, all Level 2s.
Okay. And then, also, a reduction in number does not necessarily equate into a decrease in percentage?
Right. A reduction in number, I don't want to put words in your mouth, does not mean we're less, more disproportionate or less disproportionate.
I just wanted to.
Yeah. So, that's why I captured that other number on there as well, because when you're looking at enrollment's up, but the percentage of referrals are up, how do you figure out, are we making progress or not?
I think it'd also be fair to say that the 2017-2018 numbers are the first year after an OCR-approved collection of data. So, it's a little hard to compare this year and last year when the collection standards have changed.
I think that would be accurate.
But I do think that it is great that I feel that the district is now on a consistent set of rules across the various buildings. They collect consistent numbers in this space, which has now just been the case.
Correct.
So, you know, just for our data question, friends, this is the baseline going forward. So, it's a little rough comparing previous years when you start a new baseline here.
We've collected the data for several years. This is the first year that we put the handbook and better definitions in the handbook. And this would be the first year for someone's sense, you're right, it would be a good baseline year for that. A couple more slides here before I hand it over to the principals. So, as we look at our individual buildings, just a, I'm not going to take the time as we did last time to go through each building, but I will hit some highlights here and just some general information. As we look at the buildings, and we do, we get the comparison of referrals and then the percentage of enrollment. And then, we also have your October 1st enrollment included on there so you can see the number of students in the building. As we look at our elementaries, 13 of the elementaries had a reduction in Level 2 referrals. Three of the elementaries increased. And then, we had one that is actually the same in total referrals, which I double-checked and make sure that was right. And then, all our middle schools and all our high schools had a reduction in referrals. And the schools that didn't show a reduction at the elementary are schools that tended to have a real low referral number to start with. So, and then, as far as the other thing I'll give you before I go scroll through these, the disproportionality in the referral rates vary, and some have improved compared to 1617, some have become more disproportionate compared to 1617. So, I just wanted to have you have that information as you're going through here. And just, I'll just highlight a couple of things. You could look at every one of these and dig in much further, I'm sure, but just an example, one thing, when we look at Sunset Terrace, I was just curious what was the difference between the number of referrals for students who are Hispanic between this year and this year, between 15, sorry, 1617 and 1718, one thing. And you'll see this on the next page as I talk about it. You have two students that account for like 24 out of 25 of these referrals here. So, again, it's not, I don't want to steal the thunder from the next slide, but there is a trend of a very small number of students accounting for a very large number of the So, what I did, and I didn't get it on here, but in the meantime, I'm just kind of crunching some numbers. When we look at the number of referrals at the elementary level, about 50.2% of the referrals came from the elementary. And if I compared that to last year, that was the full school year, 1617, 49.8% of the referrals, so pretty consistent. These go elementary and high school and then middle school, and the reason is it's the school numbers increase. That's how the middle, the high schools are right in the middle there, and that's why they're next. And if you look at the high schools, again, substantial reductions in overall referrals, the proportionality, some are up, some are down. And again, if you look at last year, 8.6% of the all referrals came out of the high school. And this year, I'm sorry, last year it was 10%, this year it's 8.6%. So, again, pretty consistent with last year.
Mr. Bachmann?
Yes, sir.
Again, Level 2 referrals?
Correct.
And does the district keep data for the reasons for the referrals?
Yes.
What is the behavior that facilitates the referrals?
Yes.
And do we see any trends there?
I don't have that right at my fingertips. That is something to be looked at last year more at the end of the year as a summary, but that would be something if you wanted to dig into that a little bit more, I'd be happy to do so.
I'm glad that you're keeping track of that, that would be informative.
Yeah, one of the things we did do through the new behavior handbook is reduce the reasons for Level 2 referrals. So, we did narrow those down from a very high number of reasons last year to less this year. As we get into the middle schools, just again, one thing I noted from last year, Willow Creek was one of the schools that had one of the highest referral numbers of referrals, and they had a substantial 80.5% reduction in their referrals compared to 1617. And if you look for the number of referrals at Kamala Middle School or the percentage of referrals, this year it is 40.5% and last year it was 40.2%. So, the referrals by level, again, are something that are staying consistent, we see over these two years, even though the numbers are varying quite a bit. Any questions on the building slides?
I, this is probably really too complicated. I would be really interested in seeing the data for this year for 1718, what qualifies as a Level 2 compared to what those same qualities in Level 2 from 1617. Since the Level 2s then were much broader, they're narrower now, can we compare the narrowness for this year with last year? Because I think that might, or the things that are included, that were included then that aren't included now could. I mean, this is kind of getting back to Mr. Schlusner's point, that we are sort of comparing apples to oranges. And next year at this time, I think we would have a more clear picture of exactly where we are.
Yes, we could do that. I think we changed some of the definitions. So, what is reported in the data that I pulled that is sent to me, it doesn't have a lengthy explanation. It is something that they choose from a drop-down box. So, that is what I have for reasons or why the referral took place.
We would be happy to. We can share with the board a copy of the old discipline handbook, and we can look at the current one that we use. You can see some of the categories that were eliminated. You can see, I think you might see some things that might have been in the old days considered a major, which is a Level 2, is back over as a minor. So, we could share with the board the old handbook that we used and then compare it to what it looks like now. We did eliminate some of, I think it's Mick mentioned, some of the categories that were very subjective.
Yeah, like other.
Besides, yeah.
Disruption to learning, those are the.
Subordination.
Insubordination, we better define those.
Good quality information. I did notice, and just a note of observation, that at one of our elementary schools, there was a significant increase, as well as one of our middle schools, went from like 20% in terms of African-American referrals for last year to 60% this time this year. And so, I'm curious, as we maybe are able to identify the behaviors Level 2, what strategies are being developed to not help address the behavior, but to change the trajectory of the students and to perhaps better assess them and overcoming? I know there's a later presentation basis that may be relatable or not, but is there any strategy beyond the reporting aspect that we hope to glean from reporting to where we're actually able to develop a strategy in terms of addressing?
Yeah, I can just share a couple of things. As you remember, one of Apulabi's responsibilities, every month he sits down with the building principal, goes over their specific data, to the point where they're even digging down. And last year, I did some of these with him, and we dug down to even the teachers. And I think I shared with you the example that last year, when we looked at a grade, we saw a teacher that was extremely disproportionate. But as we pulled up the 10 students that this teacher had on her roster, eight of those students were students of color. Had I not dug that deep and just stayed at a number, I would have misunderstood what's going on. So, we are having those conversations. I can tell you what we're doing strategy-wise, looking at each individual kid. There's some kids that we've identified, we had them, for example, they were setting three, and based on the behaviors we're seeing, they need to go to a setting four. And so, we're working with the sites and looking at each individual student and trying to say, do we have the correct placement? What other strategies could we try that you haven't already tried? So, we're, we are having those types of building conversations and really taking it student by student and trying to find the right fit for that student.
Thank you. And just as a quick follow-up. So, setting four, I understand there's one setting four in school units?
Yes.
And was that information presented, or do they not have experience of these issues?
We have not pulled that. Usually, we don't pull those alternative sites. I mean, we could, if somebody wanted, if you wanted to see that, we could. They have a pretty low number of referrals by four or five, I would estimate.
Quickly, just to reiterate, we're talking about, the substantial number of referrals are from a small number of students. So, it's, these referrals are, you know, if you have 20 referrals, it doesn't necessarily mean 20 different students. I think that's something that's really important, that we need to also think this on.
That's what the slides come from.
Yeah, I'd also like to remind the board that we're still, remember, we changed the four-half days to full days for professional development that would allow us to get all of our teachers and parents trained. We're still training staff, so not all staff have gotten the training that we've set up. And I'm a firm believer of you have to be patient, but persistent. The fact that when you look at just referrals dropping off a cliff, I think what the message it sends is that we as a system have really focused in on that area. And even the fact that we're seeing some reductions, even though it's slight, in the disparities, I think that we are demonstrating that we're going in the right direction. I I personally don't believe that that kind of work is going to happen overnight, but the fact that we are seeing, the first step was increase or decrease in just referrals and some improvement in disparities, even though we haven't completed all of our training, I think it's very positive that we are headed in the right direction. But we still have a lot of work to do in that area.
Okay, for my final slide here, this is a student summary. So this will give you an idea what some of the referral rates are. And we did talk about this last June a little bit, too. That was one of the highlights, is we have a small number of referrals, a small number of students that account for a high number of referrals. So what I have on this slide is 16, 17 first semester, 17, 18 first semester, again, Level 2 behaviors, what our student enrollment is during those periods. So we had in 16, 17, I'm 16, I'm sorry, 17, 92 students accounted for 6,296 referrals. 90% of the students had zero referrals during that first semester of last year. The students who had referrals averaged 3.5. And then we had 188 students. So what I do is I take all those students and rank order them by the number of referrals, and I just kind of drag down until I find about 50%. That one worked out where I can find almost exactly 50% of the referrals. So if you took those top 188 students, and they had eight or more referrals, eight was the baseline and up, that's about 1.1% of the enrollment accounted for 50% of the referrals at this point last year. And then just some reference points as you're comparing the two years, 71 students with 15 or more referrals last year. And then 10 students with the most referrals accounted for 575 referrals. If we look at this year, we have more students enrolled, we have 873 students accounted for the 1941 referrals, 95% of the students had zero referrals. The average number of referrals for students who had referrals is down to 2.2. And we have 128 students with four or more referrals, and that's kind of that midpoint 50. If I were to drop down to three, it would have been well over 50%, so I had to take 48%. So that 128 students with four or more, and that's 0.7% of the enrollment accounted for 48% of the referrals. And we only had six students with 15 or more referrals. That was pretty notable in the last bullet point. And we have a student last year at this point, well, that's on my bullet point. We have a student last year at this point who had 131 referrals, and the student with the most referrals this year has 33. So again, we see that trend of a very small number of students that account for a large number of the Level 2 referrals.
One other question. So going forward, do you think you'll look at like the same student, also the 10 students from 16, 17, are they the same 10 students as 17, 18? So are we going to be able to, again, because I look at this data in several different ways, and one of the ways that I hope we're looking at it is how are we helping these students, you know, be more, be less disruptive in class, be in class more, and, you know, helping them move forward with their lives? So are we tracking, you know, so like, are they the same 10 students? Are they completely different? Or, I mean, or do we have, you know, seven success stories in 16, 17? So the 10 students are, you know, or the seven students are, seven of the students are different in 17, 18? Or are we looking at it all? Or how, I mean?
Not yet.
Because again, I always try to think, okay, so, you know, we're gathering all this information, but how is this actually going to help our students be better students? And at the end of their time with us, our PS, how is that making them better people?
We can certainly do some digging and find out.
And I'm not saying, and I'm not saying you have to do that at all. I'm just saying that's, that's how I, so, you know, so if that really doesn't make sense with this data, but if you guys find some other way that it makes sense that, okay, if we can kind of distill this information, we can really help these students move forward, you know, do it in a different way. I'm just, that's just what jumped out at me right now.
I think we've done, I'll back to what I said earlier, we've done that a little informally as some students that are contributing a lot now in our conversation would say, well, is this just, are this now, or were they seeing the same behavior last year? What have you, what have you been trying? Maybe with the wrong, we have the wrong placement. I mean, so I think informally, we're having this conversation, we really haven't pulled the kids out and looked at the numbers. It's more informally when we're having conversation with the administration.
And I think that some of the, some of the things that once you really start, you know, looking at the data and that you're looking at it kind of at the individual student level, I would hope that we're then actually, you know, really using the data that we're collecting to help the students move forward. So like you said, exactly like you said, Mr. Bachmann, you know, you know, what have we tried in the past? Maybe two years ago, something really worked, but then, you know, something didn't work the next year. And so, you know, how can we really help the students? So I'm glad you're giving that.
Mr. Schluessner.
So kind of along the lines of Ms. Becker, and I've asked this before, what are organizations in the community doing to help us reach out to these students as well? You know, I know there's a lot of organizations in Rochester that do great things with our students outside of Rochester Public Schools. And I guess I'd like to hear, what is our community doing to help us in this space?
We've increased some of our partnerships. Actually, we just, I think we made you aware of the Green Line program that we just started this year for our secondary buildings. And actually, Senator Nelson visited the Program of the Century yesterday. But that's more of a, I don't think it's quite what you're talking about. These are partnerships through grants or whatever. Personally, this is something I hope that committee focus team could do and help us with, you know. I've said this from day one when I came back in 2011, that we can't do this work by ourselves. This work is too difficult. It's the responsibility of our entire community to educate our children and address this discipline. So my hope is that that group can help us find those connections in ways that our community can help us address some of this.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm not sure who's going first. Brenda's? Okay, there are no question, other questions for Carl. We're going to turn it over. We invited a couple of principals to share kind of what they're doing at their sites. And thank you for giving up your mid-afternoon, late afternoon to share with us. But I think Brenda, the principal in River Valley, is going to start us off.
And you are asking questions about how do we use the data and how do we individualize that based on kids' needs? And so I'm happy to be here to tell you a little bit about that today. And I could never be here unless I had a building full of staff and parents that really were embracing this work. So we're always looking at data. We have a behavior team. That's myself, the assistant principal, associate principal, school social worker, and our behavior para. And honestly, it's one of the meetings that I really look forward to every week, because this is just one of the things that principals lose sleep over, is, you know, an orderly school and meeting the needs of all of our students. So we're looking at data, we're looking at students who we say are bubbling up through the system. We look at, within 30 days, have they had three Level Ones or two Level Twos? So they're kind of showing a need for support. And in the past, we have all given them the same intervention called check-in, check-out. Have you ever heard of that? Check-in, check-out? So that's like saying, well, you're diabetic, we're going to give you this pill. Oh, you have high blood pressure, we're going to give you this pill. That doesn't necessarily work. So this year we have this student intervention matching form that we, when students are first starting to bubble through the system, we ask the teachers to fill this out. And this is about getting, trying to get to the function of the behavior, like what exactly does this student need? So, yep, we have some kids on check-in, check-out, but we've got a lot of other things going on. I try to just always think that we need to be expanding our toolkit and trying different things. So I don't know how to, oh, that little thing right there. It's going to work. Oh, okay. So this is what a typical agenda looks like, that when we get together, we'll look at, you know, the past 30 days, the past two weeks, and then the individual students, the reasons for their referrals, you know, why they're getting the referrals, the teacher and any notes. We'll look at, so the new students, we'll look at students who are continuing, students who are on an IP, students who aren't on an IP. And that just gives us an idea of if they might have some additional support already in place to deal with their behaviors. And this is, so we have these three documents up, and we're constantly going back and forth. So this is our check-in, check-out data. So the green is where we celebrate and say, yep, the check-in, check-out is working. The red, yeah, not so much. So that student on the top has been on check-in, check-out a long time, and that's not working, obviously. And, you know, I think we were putting little tweaks into the system along, probably after week six, but we, you know, continue to refine that. We have like check-in, check-out at a whole new level now. It's called check and connect. So we're really monitoring the data on the interventions we're doing way more than we used to. And then this is the interventions that aren't check-in, check-out. Like if you're in kindergarten or first grade, you might have a little 10-frame bracelet or a five-frame bracelet, you know, that the teachers are giving you stars throughout the day, and you get to come to the office and celebrate at the end of the day if you've gotten all five stars or 10 stars. And we weren't as good at monitoring those different interventions. So I guess I'm just sharing that to show you that, you know, we are working very hard to examine our data very closely every week and making individual tweaks and really individualizing the interventions for the kids, because they just come to us with different needs.
Chris is the principal at Jefferson.
You don't need to do it. There we go. Thank you, Prathis. I'm going to talk a little bit about some things that we've done here at Jefferson. Some of the questions that might get answered that you may have had with some of the stuff that we've been doing. One piece that we looked at is an intervention one-stop-shop. We talked about Jefferson as what can we control? We can control certain things at Jefferson, and that's what our goal is, the things that we can control. And one of the things was our one-stop-shop, it's on-demand support for professional development throughout our district, sorry, throughout our building. It was through Innovation Grant through the school district that we received this. If you do my next slide, these are the people that were on that team. I just stayed out of the way so I wouldn't mess it up for them. One of our persons that's not on there is Dana DeWitt, my assistant principal, who's on this also, that worked through this and developed this program. Julie McClaren, the instructional coach, this is kind of her baby and her thing that she went through, did a lot of planning, and has really made something useful for our staff. These are just some screenshots I'm going to show you as we go through. So we start with a concern, and I'll kind of look at the concern here in a little bit. And we dig down to that possible root cause using flow charts as our guide. So if something is not working well in your classroom, you literally can go to this because something's not right. And I can start going through, and you can kind of do some of this on your own with, and then looking at stuff that people have already had success with in our building, our district, or nationwide. Go ahead. These are some of the resources that we have available. You know, some are, we're looking at behavior, some are looking at curriculum. So that's why we call it that one-stop-shop. It's for both pieces, and it's things that we can control within our building. We're going to take the knowledge that we have within our building and figure out a plan to help through this. So an example, executive functioning behaviors, kind of the next piece that I'll look at for you is impulse control. Let's say we're having a student who is struggling with impulse control. We've got a couple of those. And we just can't figure out what we're going to do with that student. Well, there's different things that they can go through and kind of help, look for resources to help. Have you tried this? Maybe it's a worksheet, maybe it's an article, maybe it's just different ways of thinking within that. And that's within that menu that you see in front of you that they're able to go through and do that. Within the resource menu, here's kind of just some things. It's a total working document. It gets added to, it gets, things get taken off, that's not a good idea or something to that extent. We look at root causes, ideas, the tries, tips and tricks, links to other resources, that attracting forms, and then for mass and diagnostic assessments, some of those things that we're talking about for both curriculum and behavior pieces within that. Again, what can we control? And kind of what I consider maybe are the biggest thing that we have, is we have intervention forums weekly, run by Dan and Julie. And these intervention forums, you see some of the things that they talk about. So this is, our staff can get CEUs through this. Not a requirement to come, but if you know it's like February 6th reading forum scaffolding up to grade level. That was something that was brought up by a teacher, here, this is something I'm struggling with. Oh, here it is. And he looked down, it goes into executive function rounding, rounding the corner behavior, habit formation. So it's both things that we're looking at. We get anywhere from six to 15 staff members at these. And it's, you know, there's information that's given, but it's a lot of conversation and a lot of sharing, a lot within our, what our PLCs are doing. Just to give you kind of a few more things, we have one-stop-shop intervention forums who also kind of targets some of our behaviors, so plans for some of our individual students. And then, if you answer your question a little bit, we had a group of students that probably had 50% or more of our referrals last year. We have a district person that is now with them in their second year, his name is Toby Taylor, his second year working with these students. And right now, they've got about 50% of our referrals down to 0% of our referrals. They're not in our radar. So we, we have kids that we had on the radar, who needs help? How are we going to help them? We have some that still are on the radar a little bit, yes, but overall, we targeted 15 kids that we looked at at the start of the year in our dad retreat. I think there's two that are on that list because we set up different practices. That means other kids are kind of bubbling up within ours, too. Early in the year, we did a major thing, again, what can we control? We targeted some of our practices and procedures in our classroom. We went back in and taught our kids from literally sharpening a pencil, when to do that, when the appropriate, how to walk in the hall, those things. We taught our kids, we kind of forget that, we need to redo those things, we're just not going right into school here, we need to go back and teach some of those things. We have monthly behavior lessons through our PBIS thing. If we see something that's happening in the playground, that's where our monthly behavior lesson is going to be. We have to reteach kids how to play in the snow. When the snow is done, we have to reteach kids, okay, how are we going to play now outside, knowing there's not snow, there's mud now? We literally have to, I mean, that sounds like a minor thing to a guy who's in middle school, but those things that we have to teach. And at the same time, not only are we teaching our students, but our staff, our parents are teaching, because they're the ones that are in charge and are out there. And they, they're not teaching those things at the same time. So we're having, we're literally giving our kids how to be successful within those things. And so through all those things, I think is what has helped our referrals continue to go down and work well.
Excellent. Area, principal Kellogg?
There's a lot of collaboration between buildings going on right now, too. And so I'm going to ask to borrow your lesson on how to play in the dirt, because we have that issue with the middle school. I'm a parent of two teenage boys and a great, wonderful teenager sitting home right now. But like any other wonderful kid, they present their challenges from time to time. At Kellogg, we have 927 wonderful, fantastic kids. But from time to time, they present their share of challenges. So as a parent, I'm always looking for a way to build my parental toolbox. And same way, as educators, we're always working to build our educator toolbox, I'm here talking about some of the training that we've been doing this past year and then the year before, and frankly, some of what I think is some of the best training I've seen in 18 years as a school administrator, just fantastic stuff, and how it's impacting our students in our school at Kellogg. You've heard about Envoy and some of the other things that we're doing. One of the pieces that we've been working on a lot at Kellogg at the middle level is our work with Dr. Sharaki Holly. Dr. Holly has been working with our district for the past three years. I first saw him in November of 2016. He did a two-day workshop, and I've seen a ton of workshops in my time, and you always get something from the things to help. But I saw Dr. Holly the first day, and the second day before I went to the training, I was in the cafeteria helping with breakfast supervision, and I started using some of the strategies. And I was floored by how well they worked. The kids responded instantly and without any kind of escalation, very, very respectful interactions, and seemed to be pleased with the way the conversations were going. And so by day two, I paid a lot more attention. And I paid attention the first day, but now I'm really vested and really became excited about it. So last year, the middle schools felt like we really want to become invested in this. And all middle schools in the district saw Dr. Holly's workshop last year in one of our half-day staff enrollment days. The same workshop that the elementary's in, the high school saw last week. And our staff was really excited. I remember I was with Dr. Holly last week, and he said, you know, the fire in this district is lit, and it's time for us to go now, because people are. is lit, and it's time for us to go now because people are fired up, they want to jump on this training, they want to move ahead. So the middle schools this year have really been trying to take it even further in our work with Dr. Holly and his work. His work is really culturally relevant, teaching and learning, and he talks very simply about faving. Faving is validating, affirming, building, and bridging. And so when you're working with kids, very simply, you are doing those things. You're validating their behaviors and what they're doing. You're affirming what they do and showing them that it's okay. You reteach, you build, and you bridge, and you show them where you want to take things to the next level. He talks about the baseline being what he calls a DMV effect. We want all our kids to be minimally appropriate, to be respectful enough to get through the DMV without any bumps or resistance. And so that's what we're working towards. We think we can probably do better, and we feel like we are doing better. We see results in terms of our reduction of referrals. But what we're doing now is the next level. This year, Kellogg, and Willow, and John Adams, and Bishop jumped on board. We've tried to take things to the next step, and we're doing some classroom coaching with Dr. Holly and his coaches. So we have a cohort of 10 teachers in each of those buildings who spent a half-day working with my classroom strategies and studying the strategies that he feels are especially essential in the classroom in terms of validating, affirming, building, and bridging, and being culturally relevant. And now he's, Dr. Holly was in our classrooms on Friday with his team of coaches. He did a walkthrough of all 40 of those teachers at Kellogg, at Willow, at John Adams, and at Bishop, and each of those teachers got two pages of written feedback. Frankly, it was pretty blunt feedback, and so for some teachers, and all these teachers are go-getters, and they work really hard, so to get blunt feedback sometimes hard, but we have a baseline that we're working for. At Kellogg, Dr. Holly's coaches will be back later this month. They'll be spending 30 minutes doing direct observation of the teachers teaching in the classroom, and then that'll be followed immediately by 20 minutes of direct feedback. This is what we saw is working really well. This is what you can do differently next time, and that'll be followed by additional coaching next month. Our teachers are excited about it. They're working on it daily. This is not, okay, when Dr. Holly's coming in town, we're going to get everything going. They're meeting daily as part of a PLC. They're doing a binder study, they're working with our instructional coach. They are doing observations of one another, they're conducting instructional rounds, visiting each other's classrooms, getting each other feedback, and they're getting feedback from the kids, quite honestly. And so am I. I met with our student, I meet with our student school board every month. It was funny, in December, our student school board said, you know, Mr. Johnson, we can tell the staff at Kellogg has had training cultural relevance, and they quick-quicked their finger on it, and they're right perpendicular, but they're trying, and they said, can you get that for the subs now? So, and that's something that we're looking at now, is how can we get training for our subs teachers when they're here as well? But the kids can see it, and that's what tells me things are working. And so we're excited about this. When I met with Dr. Holly last week, he said, how can we take this to the next step now? Can we get 10 more teachers? Because 10 teachers isn't our entire staff at Kellogg, or at John Adams, or at Willow Creek. And he said, well, let me ask you this, were the teachers volunteering, or they were voluntold? And I said, honestly, we had a cohort of 10, I could have had 20. There's a waiting list to get into this group. And so next year, that's our hope, is that we can get a second group of 10 going while the first 10 continues on their work. This is not a one-stop piece. This is ongoing training that we're working on, and we see that it has results, we see it's effective, and we're committed to it.
Thank you so much. This is exciting information, and I wish we had an hour to talk about it with you. You know, we don't, we have 20 minutes left. So I'm hoping if we have questions, that we can ask you, that you will come back and talk to us more. This is really, really exciting. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
7.01, approval of superintendent's subsequent contract. This is an action item. I read the resolution, be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 approved a subsequent contract of employment to Michael Munoz to serve as a superintendent of schools effective July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2021. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Ms. Ledger.
I would like to thank the committee that worked on the contract. I believe it was Director Schlesker and Director Workman. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? The motion has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. 7.02, approval of the 2018-2019 district calendars. This is a briefing item, Mr. Munoz.
Well, Heather is pulling that up. I just want to kind of set the table here. If you remember, and just for the members of the audience, the calendar is a partnership with our Meet and Conver Group, which is made up of the REA president and some of their members, myself, a board member, and a couple cabinet members. It's one of the responsibilities of that group is to create the calendar. So we started that process. We put out two calendars. We use the thought exchange to get feedback from our stakeholders, which Heather is going to share with you. But I do want to explain the rationale behind wanting to start a week early. And the reason for that is on the summer of 2018-19, we have a big indoor air quality project in Bamber Valley. And our hope is that by starting a week early, that gives us an additional week of construction time, and then following that for the 1920 school year, go back to the normal start time so then we could get another week of construction time on the end of the project. So we're really concerned that having our normal time period to get that project done would really be tight. So by going with an early start, that gives us a week, and then going back to traditional calendar would give us another week. So at the same, I'll have Heather quickly go through the results of the survey.
Maybe I'll just stand for you guys. Yeah, I'll just, I'll stand. I'm going to go through this really quickly for you. So our participation, we had a nine-day window or 10-day window. We had more than 2,000 people participate, but of that participation, 1,838 individuals actually answered questions. The rest were probably just starring. And I want to just break out the demographics for you. Of those 1,800 individuals, 65% were parents, 27% were staff, and 2% were students. That information is available on this slide. And the key things that I want to bring up, the superintendent stated, the preference was calendar one, which was the non-traditional start and early start, and there were four themes that resonated out of all of the feedback. One was preferring the earlier start date. Both parents and staff really agreed to the earlier start date so they could get out earlier. Two, students are ready, and so they would prefer to get students back in school in late August when students are actually ready to go back to school as opposed to waiting until after Labor Day. This is just giving me a run for my money. And the other theme was Thanksgiving. Participants indicated that they liked having an extended break, and again, that was a high agreement across both staff and our parents. And then the fourth theme that really emerged from everything was that it note, that our participants noted that the calendar aligned better with local districts, so other districts are starting earlier, and they preferred that. Another way to look at this is that thought exchange broke the groups down into interest groups. So there was an interest group for question one, and there was an interest group for question two. With question one, it was group A rated the thoughts high for Librae. And then group B were the people that supported calendar two, and so they rated the thoughts high starting after Labor Day. But the most important thing to note here is this bottom bullet, that group A was two times larger than group B. And another way to look at the data is for question two, which was about the traditional calendar. Group A rated the thoughts high for calendar one, very similar, just a mirror, and group B rated thoughts high for the school, our first school, starting after Labor Day. And those groups were close to even. But again, that was for question one and question two. Lastly, the support for calendar two, the reasons that people were providing support, the key themes were, the tradition was used a lot because it was a traditional calendar, and participants also noted that 4H and FFA run through the end of August. So those were the key themes out of question two. And the last thing that I just want to pull out here is that calendar one had 145 thoughts contributed to it, and calendar two only had 19 thoughts contributed to it, if that makes sense. So a lot of conversation around calendar one, the early start as opposed to calendar two. But there were some things that everybody agreed upon for both calendars, and that was the professional development days. They appreciated having them coincide with weekends and holidays. There was also a high agreement across staff and parents regarding the consolidated breaks. They preferred having those to accommodate travel and family activities. And then everyone that participated also preferred the full-day breaks as opposed to half-days. So there were some common interests across those groups, which is a great thing. And again, the support really broke down to supporting calendar one. I went through that very quickly.
Great. Any questions?
We're often asked, what's all this up from doing this for two years? How does this look on?
Well, I can tell you, every year in Meet and Conver, we, as soon as we get one calendar done, we always set a goal to start working on the next one, but other issues or matters come over, and then we end up putting the calendar aside and addressing issues that pop up after the calendar's done. But we do, every year I've been here, we tell ourselves, let's do two of them, and then we just don't get it done because other things pop up.
So you're already meeting next week for next Thursday calendar, or the year after that?
Well, we'll start, once this is approved, we'll put a mission to start it, but I can't promise you that we can have it done. You know, if things go really well, second semester, we probably have time to do that.
I'd like to make one observation, that MDE really does control our calendar start times before Labor Day or after Labor Day, and it's only because we're having construction that this calendar is even acceptable to MDE. So if parents really, really like it for a whole year, unless we continue to come up with summer projects that meet MDE's definition, which I think right now is about 400,000.
400,000, yeah.
You know, that this is just a one-year calendar.
I'd just like to say that the Register Education Association has worked with the district in coming up with this calendar. People have been given opportunities for input. This is one that both groups recommend. The feedback that we've gotten in the last couple of weeks has been almost exclusively, what are you going to make this decision? I would like to give people more opportunity for input. However, the input we've gotten is just hurry up and make a decision. So at this point, I wouldn't object if someone wanted to move this to action. That's just my opinion. You can decide. So that we could decide this today rather than waiting for another few weeks or month.
Motion to move action?
And move.
Well...
We have to have a talking before we...
And we'll second it, Mr. Rallo.
As I reflect on the numbers that Heather presented, and it didn't seem to be a huge amount of numbers, but that being said, I think there's no reason, if the superintendent were to say, well, you don't have to vote on it tonight because there's nothing, you know, inching on it being approved tonight or disapproved, whichever, I would be in favor of allowing the public one additional final opportunity to. They're okay. That's it.
Yeah, I have a question for this superintendent. How soon do you need to know in order to begin planning for the projects that are coming up during this long period of time?
Well, the project's scheduled already. It's just, the calendar doesn't change it. We're just going to have to really...
Hope it all gets done?
Cross a finger and hope it gets done, and pipe it in. I can tell you, even today, I heard John talking on the phone to people wanting to know when the board was going to make their decision, are they going to make the decision tonight? And our message to them is, we don't know. It's brief. They could move to action, they may not. Our community's, it's interesting that the calendar is extremely important, and they want it done quickly. So if we wait two weeks, we'll just continue to, you know, get the same questions you're getting, when are you going to make a decision? And we'll just tell them the decision will be made in two weeks.
I would like to acknowledge that because of the timeframe that we're looking at, that we know that we have some families who have already scheduled vacations and activities for the last week of August, and that by going forward with this calendar, that may provide a challenge. So I just want to acknowledge that. I also want to acknowledge the people who participated in the survey, because I did the survey, this thought exchange process. I think that's really important as well. I feel like at this point, unless the board is willing to entertain a change in what has been proposed to us, that the prudent thing would be to move ahead and move this to action, unless we are feeling as if two weeks more of time and public input would somehow change our minds about going forward with the pre-Labor Day start. And if that is not the case, then I would support moving forward with approving it tonight, knowing that not only parents want to know, districts want to know, but also our community partners want to know for their summer programming as well.
And I just want to remind the board, I think 60% of the people who were part of the thought exchange were parents, so majority of the feedback we received were from parents.
It's been moved and seconded to move this to action. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? This is an action item. It resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 535 approves the 2018-2019 calendar with a pre-Labor Day start for the district schools.
Prove approval.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, we are on to 7.03, approval of data sharing for ACES resilience work under collaborative CHAMP grant. This is a briefing item, and I apologize in advance that we have so little time for you to brief us.
So, Madam Chair, School Board members, Superintendent Munoz, Ms. Edgar, I'm really honored to be here with my colleagues this evening, Connie Grimsrud, who is the Assistant Superintendent, or Assistant Director of Special Education.
We've been doing it all the time.
And Dr. Brian Lynch, who is a Mayo Clinic pediatrician. For the past nine years, we've had a very strong partnership through the communities collaborating for healthy development task force, which really includes school board, our school members, school district members, and community members. And we've really worked on improving communication and collaboration between our agencies with the ultimate goal of improving health outcomes and developmental outcomes for children in our community. And this request that we're bringing to you tonight really is in that same spirit. And I'd like to ask Dr. Lynch to tell you a little bit more about the request of the CHAMP Community Health Assessment and Improvement Measures Program.
Thank you. Thank you for having me here tonight. So I'd like to talk about this program. It's called Identification Intervention for Adverse Childhood Experiences in our local community. So for those of you not familiar with adverse childhood experiences, either distressing or traumatic events that children experience that can range from child abuse to household dysfunction, they have been shown to be associated with long-term health concerns, including high-risk behaviors and chronic diseases. They've also been shown to be associated with behavioral problems in school underachievement. So I know you're aware of this, with the trauma-informed school programs at Riverside and Gate, which are actually part of this project. But we'd like to build on that. In this new project, we'd like to build on what we've done in the last couple of years. In the last couple of years, we've looked at implementing ACES screening in different community settings, mostly home visiting programs to this point, and we've looked at correlating the outcomes with especially maternal and paternal well-being. So that's kind of what we've done the last few years. This year, with this grant, we'd like to look at the children themselves, children who are exposed to ACES, how, what kind of programming, what kind of interventions actually improve their mental health and behavior, behavioral trajectory over time. So that's the goal. It's a very multifaceted grant. This is just one piece of it here. We're working with Lowndes County Public Health, we're working head start with different projects within their programming. But here, we're specifically talking about programs within Rochester Public Schools. So the main goals, you know, what we like to do is we like to, from Mayo Clinic's perspective, take data, de-identify data from the programs that are happening already. The data is already being collected. For example, the parenting, the challenging, the spirited child class that PEG helps organize. They've been doing this for years, and they are already collecting data on the mental health status of those children at the beginning of the class and the end of the class, and they're implementing... And they're implementing some trauma-informed interventions and ACE screening. And we'd just like those results here, and we can look at how effective this is. In Connie's case, there's some teachers within early intervention who are willing to pilot trying to do ACE screening, and we'd like to see how that would work in that setting. We know that these are families that are high-risk, they're showing a high risk for developmental and mental health concerns. We'd like to look at that. Also, back to Riverside Engage, we'd like to help evaluate some of these interventions you're doing through questionnaires that the teachers at those schools would be filling out about the behavior of their students. So that's the whole goal of the grant. You know, these ideas came from our community members. These came from our teams. And we'd like just, you know, the grant pays for parts of the programming and then would help pay for the evaluation aspect. So I think with that, because we have a short of time, I'll leave a minute of questions.
Any questions? Do you need some sort of an answer on this sooner rather than later?
We would like an answer sooner.
It's two weeks, two later.
It would be better if we could have an answer.
Today would be better?
Yeah.
So you're looking to move to action. Good. Move the segment to move this to action on discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? It's an action item. And don't retire. Just rethink that. It resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 approves the release of ACE's resilience data to Mayo Clinic as described above. We've been seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you so much. This is a wonderful, wonderful condition. Last item, resolution disciplining and employ. This is an action item. Shoot, I can't find it. Right here. Go through the whole thing. Therefore, be it res... Therefore, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 535, Rochester Public Schools as follows. The School Board hereby approves the letter setting forth the discipline and the basis or causes for the discipline. Two, the School Board Chair is directed to sign the letter on behalf of the School Board. Three, the district superintendent, or as designated, is directed to serve the approved letter on the employee and to place a copy of the letter in the employee's personnel file. Four, pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 13.43, subdivision two, the specific reasons for the proposed discipline, the nature of the proposed discipline, and the letter or private data on the employee until final disposition of proposed disciplinary action. Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? There are none. All those in favor, say aye. All say aye, roll call vote.
Mr. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mrs. Becker?
Aye.
Chair Marvin?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Ms. Seeler?
Yes.
Ms. Workman?
Yes.
Motion is passed. Thank you. And this meeting is adjourned at 5:59 PM.